All right, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll just, we don't have anybody for invocations, so we'll just stand for just a moment of silence before we do the pledge. We'll go ahead with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This snowy Tuesday night. Thanks for the police officers. Thanks for coming, guys. We'll go ahead and move on to item number two, which is to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Blake. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That moves us on to the approval of the consent calendar, which are the minutes of the November 26th meeting and the payment of bills.
So moved.
Motion by Mary, second by Doug. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will now open a public hearing for the 2025 final budget and property tax levy.
Well, there's nobody here for that. We will go through our kind of normal process with your permission.
Yes.
Got PowerPoint here that just kind of summarizes where we're at as far as our final budget goes and what the process is, tax rate, tax capacity, just, you know, any unusual or significant cost changes as far as operating costs and some one-time budget items, so. You know, as we, as we tell people every year, just as far as the property tax system in Minnesota, it can be confusing with, with timing, the roles that the different jurisdictions play in that process. You know, the county assessor actually establishes values of, of properties. The city's role is basically to determine what our levy is, you know, the dollar amount of our levy. And we do that based on budget and, and set what that, what that levy amount is. Market values and tax capacity, you know, there's, there's two ways, I guess, that it can go up or go down, but, you know, we've been seeing an increase in tax capacity. That's either from increasing valuation on an existing property or the addition of new property, which, you know, basically creates new property tax value. If people want to contest their valuation, you know, basically last April was the opportunity to do that. Early in the spring, usually February-ish, we get a, you know, get a slip in the mail that, you know, tells us what our anticipated or projected values are going to be. And you can go to the, to the county office and contest that. But if you don't, what you get on that slip is what you end up with for property taxes payable the following year, which in this case is 25, so. For people in the city of Staples, you've got the city of Staples levy amount, you've got the school district, you've got the county, and then there's a little sliver on there for Region 5 Development Commission. That's that other one that's on there, so. So as far as tax capacity, and, you know, you can see, you know, our final 20, 23 tax capacity is 1.711 million. Now it is 2.21. You know, that increased almost 500,000. Tax rate, down to that 49, or a 20% decrease. What we're proposing with our tax levy is, do I have the right one here, Tara?
No. I don't know what happened.
I'm like, that number doesn't make sense.
I was trying to rush this morning, obviously.
I think I have last year, so we can compare the two.
I'm so sorry.
Well, everybody has your pa, a paper copy of it in here, so let's.
Correct.
We'll jump to that. I'm looking at that going, this doesn't, this wasn't what I looked at this morning. So anyway, if you want to, you want to look on your pads or if you have, have the paper process in there, but, you know, the, the tax levy, what we're proposing is the 2.52. At our last meeting, you know, we had the budget in there as well, and that's where we're at. That equates to a $27,700 increase. So the tax capacity increase, you know, previously, a year ago, was 500. This year it was 33, $330,000 as far as the increase. That's about a $9 million market value increase due to new development, either residential or commercial. Projected tax rate, we went from the 49.26 down to the 44.25. And again, that's just a simple mathematical formula based on, you know, tax capacity and what we're levying. And class rate gets thrown in there. So when, when valuations are, are going up rapidly, tax rates go down, as long as the levy is relatively stable. It works the other way, too. You know, if, if valuations, you know, have, you know, a couple of years of rapid decrease, steady decreases, and our levy stays the same, tax rate goes up, so. Other revenue that, that we tend to rely on from year to year, obviously, local government aid is a big aspect of our, of our budget every year. The increase from last year to this year was a whopping $2,122, so, you know, and I don't know, that's something that the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is kind of constantly lobbying with legislature to build in some type of inflationary adjustments, things like that. Not going to complain too much because the year before we did get a pretty healthy bump there, so. Also built into this year, this year's budget, there's some ARPA dollars that we have yet to spend, so we've got that budgeted. That's 88,000. Small cities assistance, they, they finally permanently put some dollars in formula base to go to non-state aid cities for road maintenance and, and street type improvements. So basically added that to what we normally would budget and, you know, doing overlays or new paving or seal coating, you know, that type of thing.
Will that be an annual thing then, or will it just?
Yeah. Yep. And then we've got listed in here just Sourcewell impact funds. We've got Sourcewell grant dollars in here for revenue as well. And that basically is a $50,000 number for our warning severance.
But that's a one-time deal unless we apply again.
Correct. Yep, yep.
You can get awarded.
So as, as far as where increases come in on the budget, you know, obviously, when we approved labor agreements here about a year ago, that's built in, so there's a four-and-a-half percent COLA built into that. Audit, our audit costs and attorney, and attorney costs have also gone up a little bit. And just the normal supplies, utilities, you know, just like everybody else sees, there's cost increases, so. That is, you know, essentially what the, what the increase is about. One-time proposals for next year. Anticipate hearing back from FEMA shortly on storm shelter. If we get the green light from them, we'll be putting the storm shelter out at Dower Lake. Talked already about the civil defense sirens. Also, the, you know, some stuff with Sourcewell dollars, computer, squad radios, stuff at the, at the PD. Want to get the caboose painted, finally. So we've got that in the budget. Pavement at the fire hall, both front and back, that's getting pretty bad. Mobile radios for the fire department, grass rig, Ventrack, again, like I mentioned before, we're not positive that Ventrack, that Ventrack will be the brand, but basically a sidewalk machine for dealing with snow. A new V plow for one of the trucks, hot box, so that we're able to heat up that cold mix for pothole patching. And then community center renovations in there. So, you know, those are, those are items that aren't going to happen every year, but they're items that we do have included in the, the budget for this year.
You probably explained this, I think, because I remember when we talked earlier, but this Ventrack is a piece of equipment that we're going to use for the, on the sidewalks with snow, you said?
Correct, yeah. You know, we, right now, we use that John Deere, that 1025.
Yeah, yeah.
John Deere.
But like around here and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And we, you know, we do the skating rink.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got a lot of, you know, a lot of city-owned property that we do the sidewalks in front of, so. So that's, you know, kind of the, the summary of what, what's included in the whole budget discussion. And I was kind of end up lumping a number of agenda items together here as far as the discussion goes, but where, where we're at is, is the 2.52% increase. Think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, over the last seven years, we've averaged 1.14, which I think is, is pretty darn good with the kind of cost increases that everybody's been seeing. And so our total tax levy, just to talk a little bit about the resolution, the next agenda item, total property tax levy is at 1.125 for this year, and you can see how it's broken down in there. And be happy to answer any questions that anybody has on that while we're still in public hearing. If not, we can close the hearing and have discussion or ask any other questions.
Any questions related to the public hearing? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to item number five, which is to consider adopting Resolution 1976, 2025 property tax levy. Motion by Roy, second by Mary. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It brings us to item number six, which is to consider approval of the 2025 budget.
So everybody's got a full copy of the, of the proposed final budget in the, in their packets. We've, you know, talked about this at our workshop and, and back in September when we did our preliminary. It's down a little bit from the preliminary, but otherwise, you know, basically unchanged from a couple of weeks ago. What, one thing I will point out that, that we are going to be doing in here on the, some of our bond payments, there's three different former projects that we're going to pay off this year. And that's going to, you know, that'll free up some levy because we have not only Forest Street project, but also Southside project. So, and the, the dollars are there. And that would be the old 98 Southside project, the water sewer, the Lakewood Water and Sewer project, and then also the Highway 10 project bonds.
So that budget, that budget line item there of the, of the interest and stuff probably won't go up. It may not go down either, just sort of we'll stay because we'll be getting rid of some and having some.
Yeah, the, the goal really, you know, I don't like this.
Yeah, yeah.
So try to keep fairly stable. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on the 2025 budget, if there are any. If not, I would recommend approval.
So moved.
I will second.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary to approve the 2025 budget. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Approval. All right, we'll move on to...
Before we move on, I, I want to thank Tara, especially in the other department heads. Everybody puts a lot of time into the budget, particularly Tara, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to item number seven, to consider approval of Resolution 1977, fee schedule for 2025.
Get us back up there. So in your packet is Resolution 1977. I don't know what it is, five pages, six pages long. I think everybody's familiar with the layout of the document. I'll just kind of run through and highlight some of the, some of the proposed changes on here. The, at the community center, one of the things that, that we would like to do is add monthly membership deals. We've had quarterly and annual before, but Lacy would like to see monthly ones added. We get requests for that.
Is the student, student, senior, that's not, we did that last year, didn't we? Was that new last year? Student, senior, I can't remember, but it's relative.
I think it's been there longer than that, but not, you know, not terribly long, but yeah. So we've, so we've got the, you know, the student, senior rate, individual and family rates, and, you know, for all of these different membership levels. Let's see. In proposing to increase the garbage haulers up to 225 from 200. I had highlighted these, but then forgot to bring the highlighted one with me, so I'm just kind of scanning down here. On the equipment schedule, of, on page 53 of the packet, you know, there's increases there for the hourly rate on equipment. And, you know, what we, what we try to do is match our rates with what the FEMA allowed rate is, so that if, you know, we end up with a 2015 scenario where we qualify for some FEMA funding as part of the storm cleanup, our rates match theirs. And, yeah, and 54 is the solid waste fee that I talked about already. And then we also, yeah, should mention on the, on the bottom of page 54, all of the cannabis registration stuff, the application stuff is on there for the, all those different categories. So that is new. And I think that's basically it as far as changes that are proposed.
I entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Pushed by Roy, second by Blake. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Brings us to item number eight. Consider the second reading and add up, adoption of ordinance 551 to regulate cannabis businesses and repeal Chapter 16, Article 7. Appeal.
Our favorite topic. Talked about this at length at our last meeting. You know, again, it's not, not that we're encouraging this, but this allows us to regulate, you know, what we're able to by state statute, so. It, it basically, you know, deals with the regulatory part, the zoning part, and then that third section just repeals the THC ordinance that we put in place a year ago and substitutes the THC language in here for that.
Well, everybody knows how I feel about this. I think we're not totally informed about it myself, but I'm only one person.
Yeah, but again, I, I understand where you're coming from. Not passing this does nothing to prevent it, you know. It, we're up against state law on, on that. This just allows us to regulate where it's going to be, if it comes to be, comes to that. I don't know that it will, but.
Yeah, because they choose where it's going to go. What city gets it and stuff, correct?
Yeah. I mean, we, we can, you know, the, the input that we have on it is more from a zoning standpoint, you know. We, as we talked about last, last meeting, distances from schools, for example. We can put that in here. What zoning districts, certain, you know, the various types of cannabis enterprises can be located in, what the process is for them to get there, you know, to get that, but.
And it allows only one in our city.
Yep.
And possibly, I mean, possibly there were not being.
It's possible.
If they, they all were really hanging their shingle up, depending on the county.
It's in the counties, yeah.
And I, I, I don't think that, I don't know about Todd County, but I don't know if Wadena County has actually done anything yet in regards to action.
I have not heard anything from Wadena. I know Todd is working on theirs.
Right, so, you know, it looks like the year's going to end, and they aren't going to have, come up with something, and then the year's going to start and there're going to be laws in place, so, you know, it's good, I think it's good that we have this for the protection of the city from that perspective, so.
Isn't this the same as we did last meeting, Gerald?
Yeah, this is just the second meeting.
Second meeting adoption.
Yep, just the process, yeah.
Right, yeah.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. With motion by Mary Jo, second by Blake. Need further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I understand.
Got that, Gerald? All right. Go on to number nine. Consider approval of solid waste haulers license for 2025.
Three license applications, GNT, long peri sanitation and waste management.
Second. Motion by Doug, second by Roy. Need discussion? Hearing none. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to consider approval of pawn broker's license, 2025.
Like new pawn. Only pawn license we have in town.
Is that you, Doug?
Yep.
Motion by Doug, second by Blake. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to item number 11. Consider approval of tobacco licenses for 2025.
Yeah, everybody can see the whole list. I won't read all of these, but we've got basically all of our existing ones. One addition is the Great Plains Oil, DBA Little Store. They're in the process of an acquisition of one of the other ones on here. They anticipate that before the end of January, so.
Which one is that? And what store is that?
Which store is what?
Which store is that, Great Plains Oil?
Uh, they're, they're, they don't currently operate one here. They're in the process of acquiring one.
Ah, okay.
So.
But you can't say what one they're acquiring?
I don't know if I can or not, so I won't.
But it's one of the ones that's listed here. Big secret.
I entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Motion by Mary, second by Blake. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brings us to number 12. Consider agreement with Minnesota Department of Revenue for collection of local sales and use tax.
So a copy of the agreements in there. This is just for our community center sales tax, local use sales tax, so. I would recommend approval.
So moved.
All second.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary. Need discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number 13. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding with IBW.
So in your packet, packet is a copy of the MOU. Basically, this is, is, we're, I think nearing the end of our process with the Public Works consolidation. And, you know, we went through the whole unit clarification with BMS, and they've said where everybody needs to be. So this just, you know, kind of solidifies that, identifies certain provisions that were in the AFSMI labor agreement that will now be in IBW, and cleans up the, the recognition clause in the, in the IBW contract. And rather than redo a whole labor agreement right now with a year before we actually are due to negotiate labor agreements, again, we'll do the MOU. The piece that is not in here yet is, is the wage, the compensation piece. We're still working with, with IBW to resolve that, so. We'll bring that piece back.
So we'll still have ASME for three people?
Yep. Still be ASME with four people and IBW with... Eight. Yeah, eight. So anyway, I would recommend approval of the MOU with IBW for our public works folks.
So moved.
All second.
Motion by Mary, second by Roy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Brings us to item number 14. Consider canceling December 24th council meeting and authorize the payment of bills.
This is the most important agenda item. So obviously, December 24th is Christmas Eve. Everybody wants to meet then. But we will, at the end of the month, still need to pay bills. I think Doug and Mary Jo are up as bill signers, so if we want to cancel December 24th meeting and authorize the payment of bills, we'll, when the bills are ready, we'll contact the council members and get them in to sign them.
I think those guys are pretty reliable.
Yeah.
I guess, I don't care. As long as they get paid. They get paid, let's say get paid.
So we need a motion on that. Doug, Doug moved.
There we go.
Now we a second. Mary Jo.
Okay, who, who?
Doug, motion, Mary Jo second. I'm going to get Mary Jo a second.
That's good.
Okay. I was way wrong.
We need discussion on that item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That brings us to committee reports. We'll start with the Staples Economic Development Authority.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yes.
There we go. Does that work? I hope, I hope it works. Just a couple of quick updates for you all. I, as of today, we've spent just a little bit over $200,000 of the small cities. As of today, we've spent just a little bit over $200,000 of the small cities development money, so that was originally just shy of a million, so there's about 700 and change left to be deployed. All of the monies that have been spent thus far are on owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, so that's where it's in the process, and it's a little over a third of those, based on what I've seen come across, are, are in the process of being rehabbed, with about two-thirds of those left to be done, and then they still have the rental owner housing and the commercial housing left to do. So that's where small cities is as of now. We're working on finalizing how we're intending to deploy the, the Blandon Leadership Boost Grant monies. I think we're pretty close now to understanding exactly how we'll deploy all of that to close that out. We're working on renewing all of the leases for the industrial park building, and just to let you guys know, CEDA voted to add, starting next year, so 2026, so not next year technically, the year following, add a 2% inflator every year to the rental contracts, so that will not go into effect for this budget cycle, but going forward, that's just going to be an annual inflator. The, the board voted to, to add that. I've been working with some members of the LEAP Board to try to find ways to bring back and support some of the community welcoming activities for new residents that, that we've had in the past and are trying to, to bring back and support, so I'm really excited about that. I've started working with the Trails Committee, which has come back to start meeting again, so we're working on, on a few items with respect to that, and currently working on a grant opportunity for the community center. I had the chance to discuss that today, talk through what we can get done with that. They're due in short order, it's, it's last-minute ARPA funds that the State Department of Education is trying to get deployed, so we'll, we'll see what we can do with that. And then CEDA also voted not to meet for this month, so there will not be a CEDA meeting, and I will be out the rest of this week because I'm on vacation, so if you need me, I'll be back next week. Any questions?
Thanks, Lucas.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Public Works Commission.
Want me to handle it?
You can.
Public Works Commission met on December 3rd last week. Just a couple of, of items that, that the commission discussed. Scott reviewed basically what our disconnect policy is for utility customers, and just wanted to make sure that the, the commission was aware of kind of what the process is and what the policy is, so reviewed that. And then the action item that we have on the agenda here tonight has to do with our distributed energy resource policy, and again, this all routes through Missouri River Energy, but solar, we have one customer that has rooftop solar that this applies to, and just looking to update Exhibit B, which is our net metering arrangement and establishes what the per kilowatt hour rate is that, that the customers would get paid if they overproduce, you know, if they produce more than they use, so. It's an update to what is currently in there, so I would recommend approval of that net metering agreement.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
So also just wanted to note Chad Longvill is on board now, everybody approved him as a commissioner, so he was in attendance at his first official meeting, and as a newbie, he brought donuts, so it was a good deal all the way, all the way around, so. Next Public Works meeting is January 7th, regular meeting date at 8 o'clock.
That brings us to open forum. Anyone have anything open forum this evening?
Gerald, how did it go with that guy on, when they redid that, what, Third Street? And Scott and them were going to go over and do some measuring?
Oh, I'm second, yeah. Injourne was right.
Okay.
On that, yeah.
So he was satisfied with everything?
Yep. Yeah, they went, went out there the next morning.
Right.
They even had me out there.
Why?
A witness.
I can confirm.
I think it was raining, too.
Yeah, it was.
It's good to want a field trip on July. All right, we'll move on to see administrators' report.
Not much tonight, just, you know, thinking about 2025. Typically, at our first meeting in January, we do committee assignments, so, you know, think about the committees that you're on, if that's what you want to continue with. Also, we will have a update or an amendment to our personnel policy to bring, you know, a year ago, we added all of our E S S T language, and then the legislature changed it, so we got to clean that up again, but that'll, that'll be the primary change, the personnel policy, when we bring it back to you. And then the year after that, we'll get to modify it again for paid family medical leave provisions, so. Other than that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. See you and Happy New Year.
Motion to adjourn by Roy, second by Mary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.